We can decide to upload, not just people that we want to be aware of in town, but we could decide to upload any type of people we believe that are involved in felony activities. So that, on our end, that's where we could adjust it. It's my understanding that the database itself, it's just, it's going to alert you to those violations that an officer would normally see if they were typing it into their own computer. Regarding the bridge, I would say that would be more for a confined area. I know New York, they use it in their tunnels. And certainly as someone approaches a tunnel, if they're coming into Manhattan, they're going to have a chance to take some action as by the time they get through. As far as if you did something like that on Irving Park Road for a dispatcher to be notified, and then try getting an officer to the scene to find that car, once that first minute has passed, unless you get lucky, I just don't think you're going to have the same success that you would as it being in a car with an officer in the car. That's just my personal opinion on it. And as far as whether it's a want or a need, probably a little bit of both. You know, back when we went to electronic live scan, did we have to go to an electronic fingerprint method? No, but it gave us returns in less than an hour of positively identifying someone compared to six weeks. Because we had people that had given us false information, and we didn't find out until they were long gone, that we had false information. And so then all we were able to do is get a warrant for them. So want versus need, we definitely want it. We have a number of, you know, officers that are very interested in this to kind of take their patrolling to another level and try and dig a little deeper. That's the best I can say is it's a little bit of both. It would definitely, I believe, improve the ability to find some of the more serious offenses out there. But can we do our job without it? Absolutely. We can do it both ways, so.
Yeah. Who's first? I don't know what's harder, desk or this, but I'd like to call the question on this and get it over with.
Could we have the questions? Could we have that information by next week? That's what's calling the question.
Yes.
Real call vote.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Alderman Lozaro?
Don't be mad at me, Greg. Uh, no.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Second to report and recommendation for installation of temporary speed bumps on Prospect Avenue between Potter Street and George Street.
Thank you. This goes back to last summer. If anyone remembers, some residents came in with a petition on Prospect between Potter and George. They wanted parking restricted to one side of the street, and they also requested that speed humps be installed over there. You know, before we get into further, it definitely is a cut-through over there. We do do traffic enforcement over there. But people do use that as a cut-through to get through town. We're perfectly aware of it, and I think everyone here is too. Based on that, the Public Works sent out an official survey to the residences, and I think all but one of them wanted the parking restricted. And at the same time, 19 out of 21 wanted temporary speed humps installed over there. So the policy has been in the past, if you do do any type of speed humps, you try it for a year, and then the residents are re-surveyed. And then during the budgeting process, if they want to put in to have speed tables similar to that, that are on some other streets, then it would be a part of the budgeting process, and they would be surveyed, and it would come back for a council decision. So anyways, last fall, Prospect was being worked on, and we kind of let you know at that time that we thought we could enact the parking restrictions, but installing speed humps when construction was finished in September, October, wasn't feasible before the winter plowing season. So that's why we're back in front of you today with this. The residents had expressed a desire to have the temporary speed humps installed. We've come up with a cost, and this does not, would not include staff time that the Public Works Department would have to do, but the cost for the necessary speed bumps would be $1,977.48. So we're here to bring that back to you. This was a resident concern and a resident desire to bring it to you, so that's where we're at with this.
Yeah, it was also because of accidents, too, correct?
That's correct. There was two accidents with parked vehicles over there. Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
I have one question. The $1,000 that you came up with, whatever that is, is that, how many, how many speed bumps is that?
Yeah, I just wanted to verify, because there's 12 actual speed humps they would have to buy, but that would cover half the roadway, so it would be six different locations that they would be.
So for a thousand something, what you got a price for is for six, well, six sections?
Six sections covering the roadway, yes.
And without our staff time installed?
Correct.
I, okay. I'll second your motion if there's a motion before.
Alderman Woods?
I'll make the motion, though. And then, then at least there's the second. Keep it going.
Alderman Woods?
Can I ask my question now?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Is there still parking on Prospect?
There is parking on the east side of the street. It's not allowed on the west side anymore.
Okay, so I have a concern with the speed bumps going all the way across with parking and people, that that may be more dangerous than the people just exceeding the speed limit going up and down that street. Have we looked at that or considered that?
I guess I'm confused on your question.
Well, because you're going to have a series of six speed bumps. I don't know how close they are. You get, you have all the side parking lots from Georgetown coming out. People fly out of there, hit a bump, lose control a little bit, you know, and another guy coming the other way doesn't know it. I'm talking to people that aren't familiar with the area. And in my mind, that increases the chances of an accident.
I guess two parts to that. First of all, when we, when we were looking to follow the recommendation and not allow parking on the one side of the street, one of those concerns was because there will be less cars on the street, that cars may go a little bit faster. So that's, that's the first part of it. Second part is, I have to defer to, we talked to the street supervisor, and they went out there and looked at locations that, that they could be put, and do you have any further on?
Yeah, you know, the road, when it had parking on both sides, the issue that you're raising would have been, you know, potentially a problem, but because we can shift them to one side of the street, we can probably get them in between the curb and where vehicles would park in order to facilitate that. They do come in a variety of different sizes, so we can modify that, and we can, you know, right now, we've got what's a standard size. I believe they're 12-footers, but we could get 10- or 8-footers and reduce that size and address that issue.
Can I follow up with Mr. Gallis? So if we don't put the bumps where the cars park, whatever space that would be, eight-foot from the curb out, in the times when there aren't, or there are very few cars there, now I'm envisioning, you know, the guy that does want to speed up the process and bypass, play the game, and again, you got the guy coming out at a lot, there's issues. I understand why we're doing this. I just have some legitimate, I think, concerns with the traffic over there and the possible making things a little worse.
The circumstances that you just indicated could, could very well take place.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderman Shaki?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank Bill Mayo for the new traffic pattern that brings all these cut-through traffics into our town. Trouble with this, and as you know, is, okay, you put speed bumps on George Street, and all of a sudden, the traffic on, where you put them on Prospect, all of a sudden, the traffic is on George Street, down Robin Lane, down Mill Road. I don't know if it really helps any. There are speed bumps now on Mary Jane, and the cars just take other side streets, all the cut-through cars, so other streets get all the traffic instead of Mary Jane. I don't know if there's an answer for this, except maybe we could make a law that you have to have a city sticker for Wooddale on a car to go down Prospect. Or just have a sign saying, "No through traffic," something like that. I don't know what good it would do if people would just ignore it anyway, but speed bumps, I know, we tried them on Robin Lane, and when it was just landscaping trucks coming through, it sounded like a band. I mean, it just noise galore, any kind of a truck or anything. And Robin Lane is just as wide as Prospect, right? They're both the same width. And coming home last night, there was a car parked on your side of the road, and there was a car coming, going southbound, and I'm going northbound. I had to pull over and wait till this guy passed me up. What's the difference there, except the amount of traffic, which will change, so I'll get more traffic on Robin than they do on Prospect if we put the speed bumps? It's a catch-22 type of thing. No matter what you do, you're going to have traffic someplace, unless you can put a toll booth like some of the kids have asked for that came, you know. Thank you.
I think it's a difficult situation over there. We do do a lot of enforcement over there, and we'll continue to do that whether there's speed bumps or not. This was brought, as a citizen's concern, and, you know, I think we were, we were definitely doing our part in trying to reduce the chance for accidents with parked cars and reducing, because there's more traffic there, reduce the congestion. But as far as the speed bumps, you know, we're open to, either way with this, you know, we will continue to do enforcement over there either way. This was a citizen's concern, that's why it's brought to you.
Mayor? Yeah, I've got a couple. As far as the permanent versus the temporary, I thought it was like three years in a row, and then after that, the residents had the option, if they liked them or not, because I know that's what happened over in my area. The residents, there was a dog that was killed, the kid was almost hit, and had to be like three years in a row before actually came. We had like an, like an unwritten policy, I was told.
We can review the policy for sure. I, I'm not 100% sure how many years it's supposed to be. And the director just advised me, you know, these things can be used at other spots if you ever wanted to pull them out and use them somewhere else.
And I know we had two or three different types. We had the rumble strips, I think they were called. Another one was like six or eight inches tall, six inches wide. But you guys are telling me that you're not going all the way across the road. Now, when they were on my street, way back when, those temporary ones, they pretty much went total asphalt, but that little sleeve of gutter against the curb was open. So as I'm cutting my lawn, I'm watching these people, as they come up to them, everybody shifts to the curb, and one side does not go on the rumble strip or the speed hump, and the other side, ba-boom, bounces over. If you guys are only going halfway across, oh, we're going to be zigzagging over. Even with the permanent ones, after the permanent ones went in, I had half the block yelling at me, "Why'd you guys put these in?" I go, "You were offered the opportunity to vote. The people that wanted them voted, so they received them. The ones that didn't want to respond, then were all complaining that they were there." But I'll be honest with you, those speed humps, the way they set them so you can go at 20 miles an hour, that works for the cars, but the people with the SUVs, you think they're at the Indiana Dunes.
I guess, I guess I would say whatever your direction will, if they're not there, we'll do more speed enforcement over there.
I mean, if we're going to do them, I think we should go all the way across, because otherwise, they're going to be zigzagging those, those things like crazy, in my opinion. I know that might bring the cost up a little or something, but if you're going to do it, let's make sure we go all the way across. Alderman Winger?
I am looking to support doing the temporary speed, speed humps to, to see how they work, and then to determine if we put in permanent. And we did ask the people if they wanted this or not. They did say yes, so I believe it is the right approach to do this. And I also would like to see, Chief, if you could work with Mr. Gallis and see if we can bring them all the way across from side to side of the street. And, and I think that might satisfy some of the concern here. Thank you.
Chief, you did, you did do the study, correct? You did a speed survey already on that street?
Yes, we did in the past. And what we'd certainly do is if this, if the direction is to put these in, we would do another one right before installation, and then we would do one in the middle of summer, once behavior has been established, to see what the comparison is for average speeds and that.
Alderman Woods?
Could we look, or Rich, Mr. Gallis probably, could we look at, you know, maybe less of them? I mean, I had them on my street, and the guys used to crank up the car and launch them off those things. It was amazing what they would do to a $40,000 car. It would be bouncing off the pavement. But again, we think that those deter things, and I'm not saying that they're, they're wrong to put in, but I just want us to make sure that we really look at what we're doing over there when we do it, you know, some of the things that the mayor brought up, you know, just that we don't just blankly throw them in while more is better. Thank you.
The answer, of course, is yes to that. MUTCD prescribes how many you can put in at a certain distance, so we'll follow those guidelines. So there are guidelines available to us. Going curb to curb, we have to be careful with drainage patterns, and we also have to be careful with reduction of parking. So those are some of the counter-issues to the issues that you raise here tonight, and so we'll want to make sure that we consider those issues as well.
Mayor, you had a question? When I say curb to curb? But they stopped at, at the asphalt. They didn't go all the way to the curbs. You already had a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. What's that? No? One no. Items considered for future meetings? I don't have any. The motion of adjournment?
I move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll call the Public Works Committee here. Make the minutes taken up the same people present, and motion approved the minutes, March 28th, 2013. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Corrections, concerns, on favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
I'm sorry, go ahead. You have something? Item number four is a presentation for H.R. Green Waste Water Treatment Plant, Phase 1A update. This is what we asked for, that I asked for, that you guys will be updating on the treatment plant that's under construction right now. So, Mr. Gallis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, there are four representatives from H.R. Green here to discuss both the Phase 1A status and reintroduce Phase 1B, so it's familiar in your minds as we consider the next steps in the process to improve our wastewater treatment facility. Tonight, I believe Mark Hardy from H.R. Green is going to do this presentation, and we had some dialogue about what to present, and so what you'll see is some pictures and some progress updates, and it'll close out with, with an update on schedule. I know that's been on everyone's mind, so we'll close out with that in terms of this first part. Following on with this will be a discussion of Phase 1B, as I said earlier, and proceeding with a contractor and our recommendation to here tonight, and I'll wait and pass that over to Mark Hardy for some, for the presentation here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
On this presentation, we are going to speak English, not engineer, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, as, as Rich mentioned, we'll go through some slides here, do just a short background, and then give a little sneak preview of what 1B is going to look like on the site plan, and then we'll have some pictures to show where we are with 1A. So as you, as you recall, have some bullet items here for what our objectives were for upgrading the facilities at the North Waste Water Treatment Plant. We wanted to replace aging equipment and improve performance, reduce O&amp;M expenses. You can see here that this is some of the old equipment, where we have some, some more manual intensive raking of the bar screen down in the lower right-hand corner. We're going to more automate that process more. Then we have some deteriorating equipment. I get my pointer to come on here. Some deteriorated equipment that we're going to, to replace and get more advanced, more efficient, more user-friendly equipment. A couple more objectives that we are doing is meeting our new mercury limit. That was a new requirement from IEPA in our NPDS permit that we have to be able to remove mercury. Some of the equipment that we're putting in is going to allow us to do that. And then lastly, plan for the future, for future development along Thorador and other, other future scenarios, we'll be able to accommodate some additional flows as we go forward with future phases onto the treatment plant. But everything that we're doing now is setting us up for that, for those future flows. This is a overall site plan of the wastewater treatment plant. You'll see that the items in, in red over here on the east side of the plant is Phase 1A. That's what we're doing right now. The items in the blue or the purple are what's in Phase 1B. So I'm just going to take just a minute here to, to run through what's going to be in 1B and some of the highlights of that, and then as we go through the pictures, I'll tell you what, what we're accomplishing with the items in, in red. But down here is essentially the head of the plant, and we're putting in a new raw sewage pump station. And this new pump station is going to have screens in front of the pumps that are going to allow us to take out rags and other debris that's, that's in the wastewater that could damage the equipment. So this is a huge upgrade from what we had before, getting rid of some of those, those things out of the wastewater that is harmful to our pumps and causes more maintenance to remove it, and, and it's going to reduce the wear and tear on the equipment. From there, we, we pump it up to building, this building here, it's called Building 30, the preliminary treatment building. In there, we have grit removal, which is another major improvement for this plant, is we're going to take out some of the fine sand and grit that can also accumulate in downstream basins and cause problems with when we pump it and the wear and the abrasiveness of that material. I'm going to remove that out and automatically put it in dumpsters that can be removed and taken to the landfill, do that all automatically, so we don't have to worry about it accumulating in basins downstream processes. Also, in this building, we have an electrical room. We have our blowers here that pump oxygen into primarily these tanks here and here. We also have in the lower portion of that building, we have some sludge mixing and pumping and transfer equipment that can take sludge out of different basins and bring them over to this area where we can either use a, a belt press to take the water out, and, and then eventually get it to where we can land-apply it, either in the landfill or on crops. And then, thirdly, there's some, the blower room, digester, electrical room, a major electrical improvement here, before there was, the electrical room is in this area, which is more, and it was in a floodplain. It was more prone to flooding, and it was a, it was a vulnerable place for that electrical equipment to be. Here, it's up at a higher elevation, much more secure, and much more upgraded with new equipment and dispersed throughout the plant. Next, we have Building 90. Here is the, a new digester. It adds on to the, it's another basin to treat the solids portion of the plant. After the solids have settled out, it goes in here and gets treated and stabilized, and, you know, we'll have a lot more. Here's the existing digestors. We're adding on another basin to give, have, give us more capacity and flexibility. And then our last process over here is excess flow. This is similar in nature to what we have now, but it uses a newer technology that's, that's self-cleaning. It's also going to reduce O&amp;M. It has a, what's called a tipping bucket after the storm event comes in, and we, we, we allow the settles, settle, settleable solids to settle out, and the, and the effluent, the clear water, it bypasses the main treatment plant, but we hit it with, with disinfection before it goes to the, to the river. So that, the overall process is the same, but it's, we had to move it to make room for some of this equipment up here, plus we take advantage of a newer technology that's lower maintenance because of the self-cleaning capabilities. And then over here is Building 70. This is our final effluent building. This is a UV and filter building that is currently as a deduct alternate for the plant that, you know, the council has the option to consider either having this in the project or not including it in the project. But right now, it is included in the base bid of the overall project. And that is another added treatment process that can further take out any suspended solids that are in the water, and also use UV disinfection as opposed to chlorine, and get rid of the chlorine, which is more of a health hazard and more maintenance O&amp;M required. So that gives you a refresher on, on what 1B is, where it sits on the plant, and some of the reasons why we're doing it. So before I go into the construction pictures, just to remind you some of the challenges that we had to overcome on this project, the first two bullets kind of go hand in hand with each other. We have to keep the plant in operation during construction. All the units that are there have to keep, keep in operation, and, and the limited space that's available. So what typical scenario we have is, we want to replace a treatment process, so we have to find a, a clear space that doesn't have anything built on it yet. So we build our new treatment process off to the side before we can take the other one offline. And then the other challenging part is, we have to run a pipe to that unit and back and connect it at the same two connection points, but a lot of times, there's things in the way when we're piping over there and piping back. So there's just several projects like this where the, the space is so limited, and, and we have to keep water flowing through it at all times. We can't ever take a break with that. We always, if we have to take a unit down, we, we have to do it in a very short amount of time or pump around it, or those type of things. Just, just to remind you of some of the, the challenges that, that we're facing on a, on a weekly basis. And also, we had construction continued through the winter on this project. This, this is a picture of the final clarifier going in, and this was a February snowstorm that we got. So when they came to work in the morning, they had to, to get rid of six inches of snow to get down to their, their blue tarp, that underneath there is rebar that they knew, knew it was going to snow the next, that night, so they covered it up. Now they have to uncover it to get to it to continue putting in their rebar to get ready to- to pour that foundation or that slab. And then lastly, another challenge that we're dealing with is with this type of project, the specialized equipment that we have and the long lead times to get them in, this is also going to be an issue on 1B, just the shop drawings and the fabrication time and the customization and the shipping. There's a pretty long process from beginning to end that just takes it, causes, pretty important to coordinate all the work that's going in to make sure that these pieces of equipment can get in in a timely manner. So now we're going to run through some pictures. This is the piping tunnel that connects the, kind of the north part of the plant to the south part of the plant. There's a bunch of piping that needed to get through this area, and we just had such limited space that we needed to construct a pipe tunnel. So this is looking north. This is what it looked like before. We excavated down, starting to pour the foundation. Concrete will go right on top of this grade. Here's a little while later, we got the walls up, getting ready to put the roof on, and then this is the roof, almost getting ready to be poured. This is what it looks like on the inside. You can see that we have several pipe racks here, got pipes hung from the ceiling as well on the side, and this, there's, this is, there's going to be more piping going in here, but we also are set up for future, for this next phase, there's going to be several pipes that are going to get installed in this pipe tunnel as well. This next one is the aeration basins. This is going, adding on, there's four existing basins, and we're adding a fifth basin. This is really the heart of the treatment process. This is where a lot of removal gets done in this basin. This basin had to be constructed here, and then there's a new building, 50, is going to go right here. I'll just go back quick, give you a refresher course. This is the piping tunnel here. This is the aeration basin right here that we're looking at. This is a building 50 that's going to go there, and then the final clarifier is down here, and the admin building is right there. So here's the aeration basin going in, and then this is what, this is nearly complete with the diffusers in the bottom. This provides air and mixing and allows the microorganisms to get in contact with the organic matter, and where a lot of, like I said, a lot of removal takes place in this basin. Next, we have the secondary control building. This is where, this is the basement, the floor slab going on. You can see the bench area down here. This is the existing admin building. This is the aeration basin right here. This is the secondary control building houses, a lot of the pumping that pumps, the recirculation pumping that pour the aeration basins, and also taking sludge out of the secondary clarifiers and the aeration basins, and a lot of our solids handling pumps are in the bottom of this basement, of this building. Here, we're proceeding to move up. We're, we've got the lower level formed with the slab on top, and we're, over here, we're doing some masonry wall. This is just a couple weeks old, this picture. This is where the exterior of the building above grade, this is all going to be below grade, and this is the part that you're going to see for the finished product. Here, down below, as I said, this is where the sludge pumping goes and the recirculation pumping. A lot of piping goes on down here. It's starting to really look like a maze of piping down there. This is almost complete. This will be ready to go and not to, by the time the downstream processes get done, all this piping will be in place. And this is the last major unit that they're working on. This is the final clarifier. This is going to be the closest basin to Irving Park Road. The screening wall is going to go right along the outside of this, closest to the road. So this is what it looks like before they poured the floor slab. This is what the walls look like before they formed it and poured it. This is, this is only also a couple weeks old, where they're now starting to work inside. This is where the water will flow over this shelf into this effluent trough that's around the outside. That'll be the clear settled water that's going to make its way to the UV final effluent filter building. So we're at the, we're at the end of the process with this unit. So those are, in addition to those items that they're currently working on, these are some items that are remaining that they, these first three, they essentially haven't started, but these first two are, are, we're probably looking at 20 to 30 days for these two, 30 days for the admin building, and then they'll have some site piping and site grading to do as well. So where are we? What, how are we doing with the project schedule? You can see that we started April 5th, 2012. The substantial completion is actually tomorrow, April 12th. And what we mean by substantial completion is that you can use it for its intended purpose. Sewage could flow through and get treated and meet our NPDS permit essentially. So you can see that we're not on track to meet that with the schedule that they're on. The final completion is we've given them an extra month and a half. The intent for that final completion was to allow them to do surface restoration, do some asphalt paving, do some, the intent was to do some final closeout punch list type items between these two days. But based on a progress meeting that was about a week and a half ago, they are approximately 75 days behind schedule. They are now projecting to complete the project the end of July 2013. The, and we can answer some questions regarding schedule at the end, but this slide goes with the summary of costs. The original opinion of probable construction cost was 9.4 million. The actual bid amount was 8.89 million. As you recall, because of that cost savings, we went forward with adding the admin building to the project. That price came in at 530,390. So our current contract amount is $9.4 million. With that, I'll open up to any questions, comments.
I'm Roy Wesley.
Could you go back to the screen of the behind of 75 days? So who gave them to the date of May 31? Was it your decision? How did we get to May 31st if not a completion of April 12th?
The current schedule that the contractor has provided us has indicated that July 29th, they believe they'll achieve what we deem to be substantial completion.
Let me rephrase my question. Maybe, the completion date of this project was supposed to be April 12th, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Who gave them the date from April 12th to May 31st? Who made that decision?
That is a contractual statement up there. Usually, these type of contracts have two completion dates, as Mr. Hardy indicated earlier. Substantial completion means they've met the intent of the contract. So the wastewater facilities that they've built for us are functioning properly. They may need to be tweaked, they may need to do some landscaping work on the site, but the facility as designed is functioning. So the contractual term substantial completion is what you see up there. Final completion would mean the grass is growing, it has met every last bit of what the contract may have said. The punch list is complete, just like on our street projects.
So the final date of his completion date in the contract is May 31st, 2013?
If I may, I believe that we're going to be talking about this issue in perhaps another forum, and the completion date and what that means from a contractual perspective in an executive session later on. So maybe we can defer some of that conversation to that point in time.
Okay. I just want to give a compliment to Brad Kedelson, too, for, I've learned a lot from this sewer treatment plant. He took his time to show me around a lot. And thanks to Brad that I learned a lot on this, and I'd like to the residents that I could explain it to them a little better, so.
Any other questions? Mr. Woods?
Yeah, Rich, the final completion, or yeah, substantial completion, April 12th, final completion, May 31st. Get it in 75 days. When you say projected completion of July 29th, is that projected completion, the substantial completion, or the final completion projection?
Substantial completion.
So then the final completion, we could add a similar timeframe differential from April 12th to May 31st on to the July 29th?
Accurate at this time.
And could I follow?
Go ahead.
How is that going to come into play? I mean, that's stringing that out with the new guy coming online to start the next phase. When is that, we plan to start that?
Go ahead.
We have, as part of the bid process, asked the next contractor to hold their price for, I believe, 150 days. So we have 150 days worth of latitude before they can begin, or have to begin, the next phase of the contract.
So we're just going to push that other guy back 150?
We have the-
Or some number less than that, whatever the overage is here?
Yes.
So he's not going to start before this one is 100% complete or substantial complete?
I think we would have to look at where they were, how the new contract would impact, or the old contract would potentially impact the new contract. But to answer your question directly, we would probably wait until they were completely done before we started the new contractor, most likely.
So if we do that, then the potential would exist that we went to 151 days, then what do we do?
Then we would do a work extension with the new contractor coming in.
What does that mean? I'm not familiar with that.
What we would ultimately do is we would sit down with them, and we'd talk about the new date that would start, and we would negotiate any changes, and that would have to be as part of any closeout of the previous contract. So again, I think that was something we might have to address in an executive session forum.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. James Winger?
Thank you. Couple things. I went to a chamber luncheon this afternoon and met an individual, his name is, actually, Alderman Woods and I did, his name is John Williams. He's with InPipe Technologies, and he referenced that he has started working with HR Green. He mentioned McHenry, and you may or may not be familiar with him, but his technology is to grow bacterias that then, I guess, eat the sludge, or there's probably technical terms for it. But are we, is this designed to use his product? And what are the pros and cons of his product? Is it something that should be designed? If it's not, can you explain?
Yeah, the, I believe the process you're talking about is adding bugs in the collection system ahead of the plant and giving them a head start to work.
Yeah.
The, it's a relatively new concept. It's not widely used, and it's, so it's still, still, you know, looking at it. I think it's something that could possibly be used as an enhancement or help improve efficiency, but it's not a end-all, catch-all. It can't take the, can't take the place of concrete basins adding air and sludge removal and the true process that we're looking at.
Okay. Are you designing future plants with that technology in mind, or?
I don't mean to steal the mic away from Mr. Hardy here, but I had a meeting scheduled with Mr. Williams. Unfortunately, he had jury duty, so we've had to reschedule, and so what we will do is reschedule. But as he said, it's something you normally put into the collection system or into the pipes out in the system as an aid to perhaps improve flow in the system. It's not meant to be a replacement for the process that we certainly have in place, but it's something that will entertain. I know other communities have used that with mixed reviews, and, you know, while he's looking for new technology, I think we would, we would want to have him demonstrate that technology to us, and if it's something that was a good fit, I would probably bring it back here before the council.
Okay. So it's safe to assume that we're not overbuilding, given the new technology that he has, by a million or more dollars? I mean, it's just like, we're doing the bare bones of what we need to, with or without that. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. Okay, good, thank you. Secondly, grants. Are there any grants on the table or applications in at this time?
The low-interest loan facilitates what would ultimately be a grant with our preferred rate.
Okay. And then, does HR Green have people that are actively looking for grants as the phases are continuing? I imagine maybe you did that at the onset, but we're actively in this, so perhaps there are other grants out there.
Yeah, I'll let HR Green speak to that, but first and foremost, the staff's been applying for any capital grant funding or anything like that through federal dollars and state dollars. I'm always actively trying to do that. I just recently got shot down for some federal dollars, but, you know, I'm doing it every month, basically, so we are actively searching, and there's still some, there's still some possibilities out there. But the low-interest loan would be the for-sure source, but grant funding is being searched for, and I'll let HR Green comment.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to add to that. The, you know, there's some energy efficiency grants that you're utilizing with a blower improvement that we're doing at the plant right now, but other than, it's so very competitive, there's just not a lot of dollars out there. The SRF program is primarily the avenue most communities are taking.
Okay, thank you. And then my last, if I may, is does the Phase 1A and 1B, does it have what it needs? So for example, a couple months ago, we were talking about upgrading our lock system, and then we realized it wasn't in the plans of 1A and 1B. So I believe we were going to go back and add that. So to whomever, is that added, is it included in 1A and 1B in that cost that we just looked at?
In 1B, we, if you recall, the direction from the council was to add what I'll call Corby cards or card entry to main doors at the plant, and that is in the project now, yes.
Okay. And so, for example, the admin building, the 530,000 admin building, is that going to come, finished product? There's going to be, the flooring is done, there's tiles on it, there's, it's kind of ready to go and move in? And that's my second thing, is furniture involved in it or not? That'll be an additional cost, correct?
To the first question, yes. To the second question, I think to the maximum extent possible, we would reuse what we have.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Let it go.
You were talking earlier about the mercury, taking the mercury out. What building does that?
It's primarily the secondary clarifier is, is the, we're with our, we're over, we're doubling the amount of final clarifier area. If you compare, these are the existing final clarifiers that are going to stay there. We're doubling and really slowing down the water as it goes through there. That's, that's the first line of defense, and then the second line of defense would be the filters that are in this building would be the final polishing. If there were any small particular matter that made it through the secondary clarifier, it would get removed in this building.
So where does that mercury go then?
The, yeah, it gets combined in the sludge and- The, yeah, it gets combined in the sludge and removed and either in the landfill or land applied.
So we put mercury on our crops?
It's such a small, minute amount that-
Yeah, for now, right.
We're just talking parts per billion is what we're talking about.
All right, thanks. Any other questions? All right, that's the update on Phase 1A, the overview of construction going on out there at this time. So we'll move to item number five, reporter recommendation for reporter recommendation contract award to Williams Brothers for Phase 1B North Wastewater Treatment Plant Project in the Mount, not to exceed 20,340,000. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? I'm in charge.
I'm trying to remember now, who did this first part?
A Maxman, Maxwell.
Why are we changing?
Because they, they did not bid for the second phase, and the second phase, according to a low-interest loan, it would have to go out for a rebid again for the second phase the way we broke it up before we could get the low-interest loan for the second phase. So we broke it up, and they did not bid for it due to the fact that they were overextended on their bonds, that they didn't have enough bonds to do the second phase.
Okay. And-
And Williams Brothers did the Atasca Treatment Plant, and they also did our emergency repair for our airline line system that busted that one time.
That's what I was, I'm also going to ask. The background on Williams is just two jobs. Normally, we get a whole pack of things, references and so forth from the company. We just have two, the one in Atasca and the one in Urbana and Champaign.
Do you want to address that?
Yeah, this, the, that information is a spot check of references that we did based on a list of projects that they provided and contacts. We've also, HR Green has, has experience working with Williams Brothers as well. So we, we have a comfort level that they can do the work and have done this type of work before. They're qualified to do it, in our opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? So that is my motion. Do I have a second item motion? Okay. Let's do a roll call vote on this.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Yuji Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
And that's end of that. Item number six, reporter recommendation contract award to InterTechnology U.S. in the amount of 323,925 dollars and zero cents for sanitation sewer work rehab. That is my motion. Questions? I'm in charge.
You're on the next item, right?
Item number six, yes.
Okay, I'm just-
I'm sorry.
Why do we have item six and item seven? They're both contract awards for the same thing.
One's for the engineering. You have to bid them sep, I mean, you have to award them separate. Item number seven is for the engineering.
Okay, and item six is the actual construction-
Right, of the people doing the work.
Okay, I do have another question, if I may. We have, we paid for a new TV truck, if I'm not mistaken, just what, a year ago?
Yes.
On here, it's got additional sewer televising, 44,961. I mean, why, why the addition? Why can't staff with the equipment they, we paid for, take care of that?
There are specific areas that have been identified that our folks can't get to with our equipment. So we've taken selective areas, like areas through the golf course, for example, that have long runs that our equipment won't be able to meet the intent of getting all that information. So in that case, we've looked to a contractor, we got a price, it's a fair price, and we would recommend utilizing that service because they have the equipment and the skill to be able to do those longer runs in more complicated areas, in deep areas as well.
Just, in other words, it's just the areas that we cannot do.
That's correct.
We'll be doing the ones we can.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a more, I have a second. Okay. I will call hopefully.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Yuji Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number seven, reporter recommendation contract award to RJN, 2013 sanitation sewer rehab project in the Mount, not to exceed 38,300 for construction services. This is the engineer that will oversee that project. That is my motion. Second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Lozara?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Yuji Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
That brings me to item eight, item to be considered future meeting, final pay request for ploidy construction, salt dome discussion or decisions to make on that, and the other items added to the agenda. In that case, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.